Hammond City Council, May 12th, 2020, public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Wales. Councilwoman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Dieterio.
Present.
Nothing under public hearing. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Wales. Councilwoman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Dieterio.
Present.
All right. I'll ask you to all stand for our prayer and ask Councilwoman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
I'd like to take a moment of silence and observation of those that have lost their lives during this COVID-19 pandemic. Most gracious Father, we give you glory and honor and praise. Thank you on today, Father God, for this is the day that you've made. We rejoice and we shall be glad about it. Father God, we thank you for health and strength and activity of use of our limbs and our body. We actually continue to bless our citizens right now, Father God, continue to keep us in all health and perfect strength. If there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. So, Father God, actually continue to look down upon us, thanking you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the cross that we too would have access to this real life. We thank you that by his blood that we continue to be covered. Father God, I actually continue to bless our police department, continue to bless our fire department that it continue to protect and serve us. Actually, continue to bless our city administration to him, the Father. Actually, continue to bless each person that serves on the council right now, Father God. Continue to give us the wisdom and knowledge on how to continue to move out in city and continue to advance. Father God, we just thank you right now. We thank you that everything that will be done is decent and in order and in pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, honor, and praise in your darling son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Now, for our prayer, I'm sorry, our pledge. I'll ask all veterans and active military to go with a proper salute.
(Inaudible). To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as God.
Now, for our council reports. Yep?
I just have one question about the trash pickup. I know as of today still, they haven't picked up trash in some of my areas. As of coming into the meeting, I was still receiving phone calls on it. However, I would just like to know if the company is running behind due to employees not coming in to work or what. Would I be able to answer the question back to them when they keep calling about it?
Yeah, I had a phone call from someone in Woodbridge as well. This has happened multiple times.
Right.
And as happened with one of my personal businesses, I learned the hard way because of a contract we were in that we had to email with complaints. So, I made sure I called Robert Morgan and told him, "This is about the third time this has happened when they haven't picked up." And they said a truck broke down once. I'm like, "They might need to get rid of this truck because it happened again today." So, I told him to make sure that he emails their company, letting them know per email that this has been a problem that's been happening multiple times so we can start tracking this to stay abreast of it. So, I understand what you're saying. If they don't come this evening, they will be there in the morning, I would imagine. But we're on top of it as much as we can be and we'll keep you abreast of it.
Yeah, we've had some problems in district too at late pickup. And I mean, if it's because of employees and coronavirus, then that's one thing. But if there's just an issue, maybe they need to know, obviously. So, thank you for looking into it.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, one question about that. Do we have, like if somebody has an abundance of leaves or trash, maybe clean up the yard, do they have like a one-time pickup for the year? Are they going to do some kind of cleaning and not hiring a contractor and they just...
If it's five feet or smaller, they, now, just loose leaves, they're not going to pick up.
No, I mean in bags, like...
They'll pick it up when they pick up the garbage.
Okay.
And if it's too much, we'll come behind them if need be. But usually, they do pick it up.
They often may not pick it up on that first round though because they're seeing, especially after a storm. We don't realize how many storms we've had and brought down a lot of trees in the last three weeks. And so, that's been part of the problem is that there's been so much storm debris. They combine with people staying home more, they're in just the time of year, they're doing a lot of vegetative debris right now. So, they may pick up the trash itself first and then they'll come back and use the vegetative debris on the second or third pass.
Okay.
The city, if you'll let us know, we can track those addresses, especially if they haven't been picked up for a second time. If we can get those addresses, we can track and make sure that they go.
I guess what I was asking, like, what about a scheduled, like if a scheduled excessive pickup, as in does a homeowner in our contract have...
They don't need to do that.
They're supposed to pick it up when they pick up the trash.
Okay, okay. Because I thought the parish might have had something, I just didn't know. Okay.
Yeah, it's just part of the contract.
All right.
Any other council reports? Mayor?
Oddly enough, we have our tax revenue coming in from March, which was two weeks closed. And regardless of why, I guess we should be happy that our revenues were actually 50,000 above what they normally were. So, I don't know if that was just a case of everyone going out and getting a surge. But this next month is going to be the tell-all when we've been closed for the entire month of April. And hopefully, we have done well with our big box stores and all of the grocery stores as well. So, we'll see how that fares out next month when we get the report.
Okay. All right. Now, as for our minutes of April 28th, 2020, new motion, please.
Make a motion that we accept and approve April 28th, 2020 minutes.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
No.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, none new business. Number one, a resolution to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution confirming an election date change pursuant to proclamation of the governor, establishing a new date to canvass the returns of the election and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Lacy?
Grant Schluter and his staff at Foley &amp; Udel are handling this matter for us. If you'll recall, this is to renew the millage for the police and fire departments. The election was originally scheduled for May 9th, but due to the governor's proclamations, it has been moved to August 15th. So, all this does is a formal resolution to officially move that date by the council.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve Nash Express located at 605 Pecan Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, to obtain a permit to sell high-low packaged alcohol. The owner is NH, NH, Inc. Laura Hammond.
Hi, good evening. So, this is a change of ownership. Mr. Hattin is purchasing Nash Express. They're still going to be doing a DBA Nash. He's met all of the requirements and everything that we've asked. He's been patiently waiting to obtain his business license. So, we are seeking your approval tonight. And they're in the audience, should you have any questions?
So, it's been open, I know, for a while now, but they just changed ownership as a couple, couple of weeks ago or a month or a couple of months ago?
They started the process in March.
In March, okay, all right.
And then the stay-at-home order came. So, they're just kind of been in limbo waiting.
It may have been an old owner, but, you know, I was getting, you know, some complaints in the area about a lot of trash coming out of that store on the, on the road, Pecan, you know. So, I don't know if they didn't have enough trash cans out there or not, but it might be something to look into if you're a new owner to make sure there's enough out there.
We didn't have enough, you know, for the trash.
Okay.
This is Mr. Hattin.
Translational for me, my language is inaccurate, but...
And this is Mr. Yaz.
The problem is we didn't have the bigger dumpster. Now, we acquired a bigger one, doubled the stuff, and we get more people, more workers to get, come and clean up on the parking lots.
Could you state your name and address, please, for the record? Name and address?
It's Nash Express, 605 Pecan Street.
Your personal name?
Yaz Hajari.
Might need to spell it for... You got it?
All right. Anyone else, anyone here on this matter?
Thank you.
Usually, what we also ask folks is if you would make sure that you check IDs and not serve anyone underage.
And we have all signers for checking out the IDs.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Questions or comments by the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Good luck. Number three, a resolution to purchase one fully-equipped police K-9 Tahoe from Dana Safety Supply in the amount of $48,260. Janet Thurman.
We originally put this RFP out for six fully-equipped vehicles, but based on the current situation, the mayor has decided just to move forward with one, that's essentially one that we need for a K-9 unit. So, we're just asking for approval to proceed with the purchase.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? I think that was a good decision to just move forward with one, given the budget. So, pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
No.
Councilman Andrews.
No.
Councilman Dieterio.
Number four, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter a contract with Rover Mutual Industries for Railroad Track Repairs in the amount of $83,345. Janet.
Based off our monthly inspections by our railroad track inspector, these are repairs that are needed. We put a RFP out. We had a poor response due to the coronavirus hitting at the same exact time. We only received one bid in and it's for $83,345. So, we're asking for permission to enter into contract.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council?
Yeah, I have a question. On this track repair, who all use this track? What business using this track for service?
Business out by Pride Drive, your lumber company.
How many have?
Right now, one.
One?
Well, two, my bad. There's a chemical company that just came in as well that uses it.
Yeah. Because the reason I'm asking questions about it, is this something that we can go in partnership with somebody for getting this repaired? Because I don't see where the railroad making the city any money.
Really? We got to pay taxes by being there.
Uh-huh.
They pay taxes by being there. They employ people that shop here. Their businesses pay the taxes. We are looking at getting a contract with these companies per car to start paying per car a fee. That is a common thing apparently out there where they can start bringing in a revenue to help us maintain this track for how many cars go back up in there.
You got approximately about 20 cars going back there every week. That's how many cars going back there. And right now, it's only supplying one company.
Two. There's a chemical company back there as well.
Is there pictures of, how bad is it? I, this is the first I heard of it. Is it a...
It's a continuously...
The track inspection report was on the back of the RFP.
When do it have to be repaired?
We generally repair it. Every year, we put money into repairs, changing our old tracks, old tires.
Yeah, because I think last year...
So, once a year, we spend, we usually do it once a year. If the budget's bad, we do it the following year. You know, but we have to do it regularly. Otherwise, it'll get behind, you'll get behind it and you'll have major money to spend rather than maintaining it on a yearly basis.
I believe this was more of an emergency repair. It's, they did a temporary repair so that the cars could continue to go, but during the, we were going to try to bring this like a month ago before all the fire stuff, and we already had it out for bid and we're thinking we could turn it around quickly. They did a temporary repair, but this is, this is to ensure that the cars can continue to go. Once the railroad inspector finds items like this, they have to be repaired, otherwise
Me personally, I'd like to, I'd like to table this to, so I could get some more information about it.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
No.
Councilman Wales.
If I vote aye, explain it to me. If I vote aye, what I'm voting for?
Table.
Table.
Okay, aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion table.
Number five, a resolution accepting a $14,913 grant from the Local Government Assistance Program for Improvements to the Hammond City Council Chambers and to authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles.
This is pretty self-explanatory. This is that grant application that we presented to you guys several months back, and we learned about mid-March that we had received $14,913. So, we're looking for you guys to approve it so we can get the contract signed and hopefully get some new stuff for the council chambers.
And that new stuff, will we have a say-so in what that is in another agenda item or how?
The grant application included examples of a new projector for a screen behind the council tables that the audience can see. I think we listed blinds, two displays throughout in the lobby. So, if there's bill over into lobby or if people are coming in, they can kind of see what's going on, and some other audiovisual improvements. I think when we sit down and start working up a budget, there will, there could be a contract and at the point, we'll certainly come to the council. And if certainly if anyone has input, please feel free to share.
Charles, is this a matching grant or is this a straight grant?
This is a straight grant. There's no match involved.
How long a process does this usually take?
Pardon?
A grant like this, how long the process is? Is this usually to get some kind of answer back?
We're probably looking at about, with coronavirus, it might be extended. We're probably looking at somewhere between three and six weeks for the contract to come back. Now, it could come back quicker, but typically, it's about a three to four-week process to get the, the contract back. Once we have the contract, then we can proceed. And, and at that point, like I said, it'll depend on, you know, if we're looking at, what we're looking at putting in here, what the budget will be, whether we need to put it out for bid, so forth and so on.
So, $14,930 isn't going to cover all of those items, probably?
Probably not.
Okay.
No.
What are we, the blinds and projector, huh?
Right.
TV screens outside.
TV screens outside, the wiring, all that that goes with it.
Yeah. And we get bids for all of those things, correct?
Yeah, we had, we initially had got a company to come out that does this kind of work and gave us, they gave us basically three tiers of quotes, and they were all more than this. So, I wouldn't say we'll be starting over, but we'll, we'll probably revisit the budget. And there's another item coming up later where we might be able to, to have some additional funds supplement the project from another grant.
Not only to the dollar approximately, how much more?
Yeah, that would be my question.
Well, initially, we were thinking we were going to get around $17,000. So, that was sort of the budget we were working with. We got 14 and change, so close to the original estimate. I, I think the, the quotes we got were 20,000 up.
So, this has already been put out for bid, then?
No, we just got preliminary quotes just to kind of get an idea of what our cost would be.
How much to apply for?
Yeah.
And will it, when will it be put out for bids?
Once we receive the contract, there'll be some conversations that we had. So, we got $14,913. I'll be having conversations with Marcus and Clinton IT. Certainly, if any of you have input, please feel free to share it with me. We'll work up a new budget. If that budget is over 25,000, we will certainly come back to the council for approval to proceed. If it's over 30,000, we'll have to bid it out.
Any other questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution accepting a $27,000 grant from the Community Water Enrichment Fund to purchase water sampling stations and to authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and signed related documents. Charles.
This was the other application that we presented around the same time as the previous one, which was Algap. This one, we did receive the full amount that we anticipated, which was 27,000. As a reminder, this is to enhance our water sampling stations around the city, basically securing them and making sure they can't be tampered with and so forth.
Is there a match for this one?
There is no match on this one.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, resolution authorizing contract change order number four for sewer system rehabilitation fiscal year 2018 LCDBG City of Hammond, Louisiana, Project 31813, adjusting for final materials and quantities and deducting $5,210.30 from the final contract price. Charles.
So, the original contract amount for this project was 532,365. We came in under budget. That project is now effectively completed. Again, this is the project where we were rehabbing sewer lines between Thomas and Palmetto, Morrison and Mooney. So, we're looking for the council's approval of this deductive change order so that we can go ahead and start the closeout process.
That extra money goes into the, the project fund, no?
Potentially.
Hundred percent grant.
Oh, it's a grant?
Talk more about this.
Okay. So, we don't get to keep the 5,000? You couldn't have found $5,210 worth of more work? Surely, there was something else that could be done, right? I'm just kidding. Any other questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution accepting sewer system rehabilitation fiscal year 2018 LCDBG City of Hammond, Project 31813, as substantially complete and beginning the 45-day lien period for payment of retainage. Charles.
So, this is related to the previous one. Again, this is starting that closeout process. By law, we have to record substantial completion if awarded by the council, and the contractor has 45 days before they can actually request final payment. And that's for the retainage we withhold from each payment.
Questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution supporting the submission of $157,000 grant application to the CARES Act Airport Grants Program to Offset Economic Disruption caused by COVID-19 Public Health Emergency and Experienced at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. Charles.
So, these next three are all related to coronavirus, COVID-19. These are all parts of those federal dollars that have been made available. In the case of this one and the next one, the city has been allocated these amounts. So, we're not competing for this dollar amount. This is what we've been told we can apply for. So, in the case of the airport, the airport has been allocated $157,000 based on a formula that the federal government came up with, the FAA came up with, and they're inviting us to submit a proposal to use those funds. At this point, they're telling us it's a preliminary thing and we can flesh out details later, but they want that proposal so that they know that we need those monies.
Is this SBA submission?
No, this, this is FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, under the CARES Act.
Okay, so they were given a pot of money and then they're divvying it out?
Correct.
They had millions of it. They were given, and out of the small airports, ourselves and also Lakefront received 157, I think, other small airports that were allocated some dollars were in the 20, 30, and 40,000.
Right.
So, we're fortunate to...
There's no, there's nothing that says what we have to use this on?
Maintenance.
Maintenance, any type of economic disruption.
Any other questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Number 10, a resolution supporting the submission of a $61,855 grant application to the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program to offset costs associated with preventing, preparing for, and/or responding to coronavirus in Hammond.
So, again, this is another one of those allocations. This one actually comes through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which is the same administrative agency that does the justice assistance grants. But it's not limited to law enforcement. It's an allocation to the city. What we're looking at doing with these funds is actually applying it forward, looking at technology improvements to, say, virtualize our council meetings. This is again where we might go use some of these funds to supplement improvements to the council chambers from the other grant. Can't use it for the same project, but if the costs come in higher than what we have on one grant, we can use this to kind of catch the difference. And there's a bunch of other things that Marcus and I have been talking about for this one.
You said this is one where we were just given that number as what we qualify for?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 11, a resolution one, supporting the submission of a $20,000 grant application to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant COVID-19 Supplemental Program to Offset the Costs of Personal Protective Equipment and Supplies Used to Prevent, Prepare For, and/or Respond to the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency in Hammond, and to supporting a $2,000 cash match from the Hammond Fire Department. Charles.
So, what this one differs from the previous two is that this is not an allocation. This is actually a competitive grant. So, we've been told we are invited to apply for a grant. There is no allocation. We are competing against other fire departments for these funds. This grant is for PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, masks like the one I'm wearing, goggles, face shields, gowns, shoe covers, disinfectants for the units, the firefighting units, for the stations, et cetera.
There's a cash, cash match of 2,000.
Correct.
But that comes from the fire departments budget.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 12, a resolution one, supporting the submission of a $15,750 grant application to the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase new and replacement body armor for Hammond Police Officers, and two, supporting a $7,875 cash match from the Hammond Police Department. Charles.
This is not related to coronavirus. This is just a normal grant. So, this is one that we're able to apply for every year. I, I think we probably came to you last year. The way the Bulletproof Vest Partnership works is we apply for X number of vests. In this case, I think we're applying for 25. The Hammond Police Department covers half of those costs. The grant covers the other half.[1664.91] And then we've been very fortunate, under state contract, there's actually a discount that's applied. So we end up paying about 25 to 30% of the retail price of the vests. So it's a great program.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if Charles can answer this now. Do all the police, okay, there you go. All the police are required to wear the vest?
Yes.
It's in our policy to wear the vest, the, um, they're supposed to wear it when they're out and about, as you can tell, a lot of the guys, if you've seen them, are wearing the throw-over vest. We give them different options in whether they want to wear a under vest or over vest. Uh, the reason we come every year pretty much do it is there's a time limit on these vests and once they expire, so it's kind of broken down the way we try to do 20 to 25 however it falls out, which is something I guess was worked out way back when, when we first started getting the grant, where it just kind of continues to flow year in and year out.
Yeah, we're on a five-year replacement cycle, and that's part of the grant requirements. Doesn't mean that the vest is bad, it's still a valid vest, but what happens is that technology improves in that five-year period. So it gives us the opportunity to upgrade those vests per the, per the grant requirements.
What do you do with the old vests?
Sometimes we donate them to other jurisdictions, sometimes we use them for reserve, sometimes they'll put them in the back of a unit as a, as a backup spare vest if something should happen.
Generally we give them to other cities and municipalities.
And there, and there is an expiration date on them, but some of the smaller departments, I mean, less of they, they're just happy to get what they can get. There is an obvious liability that goes along with if somebody's wearing an outside vest, which is why, you know, we try to make sure that we continue to upgrade and move on, but a lot of departments, they, they don't provide the vest, they can't afford to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Number 13, a resolution for acceptance of work by Spinks Construction, Inc., as substantially complete for sewer extension Pride Drive Heidi Project 616-12024 commencing the 45-day lien period and withholding 10% retainage. Chuck Spangler, hadn't seen you in a while.
Yep. And I know you're gonna ask it, so I'll just give you the answer, I'm gonna go see Pierre E. Saturday, so. Now, this is the extension of sewer to an area that's trying to be developed, it's about, uh, 150 acres, Mayor, you think, 200 acres? There's no sewer or water, the water's close, the sewer is in nonexistent, and the water's very easy, the city can do that themselves. So the city took on a partnership with Heidi and with the owners of the parcel that's being developed that did not have sewer, and they found out they had the subdivision approved with the cities, in the subdivision ordinance, it was stated that the city would provide sewer. So rather than pay 100% or fight over it, there was a partnership made and everybody chipped in. So there is now sewer down there on Pride Drive Extension, 20 acres of which is the Heidi parcel that they've been trying to market. And incidentally, uh, before you act on this, I would like to call your attention that the railroad was improved from the end of the CN jurisdiction, which is right over by Robinson Street, all the way out to Pride Drive as a part of an EDAP grant in 1984. And the million gallon tank and the 3,000 gallon a minute well and all the other stuff that was built, was built with 100% federal funds. And one of our requirements, although I don't know who's gonna police it, was that we've maintained all those improvements in perpetuity. Now, Delchamp's had an ice plant, they needed a water well and a tank, and of course, they're long gone, and we've still got a water well and a tank and a rail, so, uh, I know, I know there's some little bit of discussion about that railroad, but we do have a requirement when we agreed to accept the $6 million or whatever it was, I didn't do the job, O'Dan did, that we'd maintain that track. So there is a track person that goes out that's good in that expertise, he gauges the track to make sure they're the right distance apart, he taps and inspects all the, um, hi, all the, uh, cross ties and all the bridges, and we've spent a lot of money over the years on the bridges, and we finally got our bridges right, but there's still constant maintenance. And CN will not let their cars go past their maintenance point if that track doesn't meet their standards. So I don't know what the 83,000, that's none of my business, but I wanted to at least give you that history. I just heard the discussion for your own information.
Thank you.
So this, this is the...
We're responsible for it?
In perpetuity. The water, the sewer, and the track. And the water tank and the water well, I didn't say that, which is a great asset, but we see that every day, we see that big giant tank out there on 190 over by Tyser. Uh, but that was a grant, a federal grant. And it did encourage the, the construction of a lot of facilities out there that later got abandoned in the, in the late 90s when we had the recession, and now there's kind of a little bit of growth going back, maybe this Corona's gonna stifle that somewhat, but there's always a potential for a Home Depot, which as you know is out there, and Entergy's out there, so there's some other companies that could always come in and inhabit those big buildings, hopefully bring in jobs.
Andre, can you help find that possible agreement?
It's...
It's in the grant department.
All right, let's get that...
It's probably 83, 85, 82, somewhere in there. So anyway, this particular project was the extension of sewer, uh, and that project's complete, and it is in use, and I would recommend acceptance of the project so we can record acceptance.
Any questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yep.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 14, a resolution to approve change order number one, final Martin Luther King parking improvements, project number 42012108, in the amount of $6,910.70 extra from project contingencies. Check.
Yes, there's two hyperlinks that you may be interested in, that's what they look like, they were, I gave them the time, there's a change order and then there's a final budget. Well, we still, if, if, if this change order is approved, there'll still be about $13,000 left in that project fund. But anyways, this is change order number one, this is the final, this is basically a, a, a final audit of all the contract quantities, and I would just point out the main, main additions to this particular, uh, contract were based on adding curb to the, uh, basketball court. We didn't have a big curb all around the basketball court to keep the vehicles from driving up on the, I think they said RVs, but I didn't know that, so I didn't have the big curb. So we added the big curb around the basketball court, that was 5100 based on however many linear feet we added, 200 linear feet at whatever that is, 255 feet at $20 a foot.
Can we take what's left?
Sir?
Can we take what's left and put a, an arm up between the two parking lots to keep people from driving through that section?
Well, you can, we can do whatever we want, but not with this particular contractor. We, we can ask him.
I'm talking about the money.
Oh, sure. It's, it's, it's appropriated for that park improvements. And the other extra was the re-mob charge that, uh, we approved for the contractor for having to back off the project for 60 days until the restroom got finished, I mean, till the pavilion got finished. So instead of him doing all his work at one time, he only did this, the basketball, and then he came back two months later and did the parking lot, and he asked for some compensation for having to bring all his mechanics back on the project, do it all over again.
Which was what, 1,500?
1,500.
So the total, uh, additional contract amount is $6,910.70, which still keeps us $13,000 under budget. I would recommend approval of change order number one on MLK Park, Parking Improvements.
Any questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Motion approved.
15, a resolution to approve acceptance of work by MNO Construction LLC, Martin Luther King Parking Improvements, project number 42012108, as substantially complete, commencing 45-day lien period and withholding 10% retainage.
Yes, we do have a few points aside, is that they've taken care of them, and I do recommend we formally accept the project and record the acceptance.
Questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck. Number 16, a resolution authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement between the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office and the Hammond Police Department to participate in the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program.
It's not a match grant, it's a Haida Task Force money, Jefferson Parish is the fiscal agent, uh, pays for any type of overtime, um, that officers would be working on, uh, any federal narcotics cases, uh, that they would be working. So it's completely paid by thing, it's, by them, it's a reimbursement, um, we submitted to Jefferson Parish, Jefferson Parish cuts the money to the city.
Very good. Questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Number 17, a resolution to approve fiscal year 2021 non-municipal fire and police personnel holiday closing schedule for the City of Hammond, Jacqueline Broder.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Uh, the attached document is the recommended holiday closing, uh, schedule for 2020, 2021 fiscal year for non-civil service employees. The, um, the holiday calendar hasn't changed, uh, from last year, other than this year we're required to add the presidential, uh, presidential election date.
Questions, comments on this? Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Introduction of Ordinance, number one, uh, introduction of an ordinance declaring, uh, 2003 F-250 movable property as surplus and providing for a donation to benefit public safety. Janet Thurman.
Um, this is an old Parks and Grounds truck that they have submitted to their surplus area, it is literally beat up, only thing that it does is crank and run. Um, we're asking for permission to surplus this and donate it to the town of Roseland. The mayor is very appreciative, she said, as long as it cranks and rolls, she'll take anything we give her. So we're asking for council's approval.
Questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DeMist, San Antonio?
Aye.
Public hearing is set for May 26, 2020.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance declaring a Crown Victoria movable property as surplus and providing for a donation to benefit public safety.
This is a Crown Victoria that is no longer in use, and, uh, we're asking permission to donate it to the town of Ticklefall.
Does there not need to be some identifier about that year or anything like?
Um, on the back, the surplus, it's a 2009 Ford Crown Victoria.
Okay. Good enough for me. Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve, motion to introduce, I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Public hearing is set for May 26, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Number three, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, in accordance with procedures of Section 5-03 of the city's charter. Say it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we presented the budget today, uh, as required by the charter, and you all received the budget binder today, and we will discuss on June 5th.
June 5th. Questions or comments? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiMatteo?
Aye.
Public hearing is set for June 26, 2020.
June 26th work session.
June 5th will be the budget work session, and the public hearing will be June 26.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.